All right, I'd like to call to order the Westbrook School Committee meeting Wednesday, March 9th. If you can stand and pledge allegiance, thank you, Ms. Harvey.
(inaudible).
Certainly, Jessica Foley.
Here.
Jeremy McGowan.
Here.
Andrew Mancuso.
Here.
Noine Poitras.
Here.
Katie Rice is excused. Vice Chair Beth Schultz.
Here.
Chair Suzanne Salisbury.
Here.
Student Representative Julia Albierto is absent.
Okay, and we do have an adjustment to the agenda under Communications. I think you all have a copy now. It's a rate goes under the Communications and Correspondence. Student Council Government Reports, she's not here this evening. And Public Participation for Agenda Items, only three minutes per speaker. Is there anybody that wishes to speak?
We had a comment earlier in the Finance Committee meeting that congratulated us and was very complimentary about making meetings accessible via Zoom.
Okay, great, thank you. And just, I forgot to mention earlier, just as a reminder, when you are speaking, if you can pull the mic towards you so that people can hear on Zoom and on Facebook. Okay, any other public participation? Anybody wishing to speak? Okay, now into Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Salisbury. In your packets, you have the monthly Teaching and Learning Newsletter with some information about the district. A couple of things that I do want to call your attention to, just a reminder that tomorrow evening, we will be holding our kindergarten registration or orientation night for all of our incoming kindergarten families. So if you have a child turning five on or before October 15th, or you know of a child turning five on or before October 15th, please encourage them to register so that we can have accurate numbers. And please come to that Zoom meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 with our elementary school principals. I also want to point out some congratulations. Congratulations to two of our high school students, Keegan P. and Ryan B., who were featured in an article in the Press Herald about a fantastic science project in their environmental science class, where they're studying the arsenic levels of water in rural schools. That really doesn't affect us here in Westbrook, because most of us receive city water, but they were engaged in this project in class, and they continue that it is an independent project. Really, really fantastic, outstanding science work, STEM work going on at Westbrook High School. Also, congratulations to some of our educators who have received state honors. Congratulations to Matt Johnson, one of our high school art teachers. He's been named Main Art Educator of the Year for 2022. And our district's art director, Rachel Somerville, who has been named Main Art Administrator/Educator of the Year for 2022. So congratulations to both of them. They are two of the reasons our art program is second to none within the state of Maine. Also, congratulations to Farah Giroux. Farah is a middle school ESL teacher, and Farah was just recently named Main ESOL Teacher of the Year. This is just the second time this award has been given, recognizing the outstanding work of our EL faculty across the state, and Farah is a magnificent member of our faculty here at Westbrook Middle School in our district, as well as at USM. She also teaches pre-service ESL teachers. So congratulations, Farah, on this fantastic honor, and to, just as the art department celebrates the success of two of its members, the whole ESL department celebrates Farah's success and congratulates her. I think as we are all aware, in the district, we have revised our COVID-19 protocols. The document on our website will be updated after today, if it's not already up there, to reflect these changes. We've been communicating these changes through my evening emails, as well as there's a memo in the School Committee packet specific to masking. So effective today, March 9th, wearing masks indoors and in school vehicles is now optional. I'm exercising my option to wear a mask, because that's my own personal choice, but throughout the school district, masks are optional. And if people do choose to wear masks, that choice will be respected and honored, for whatever reason they choose to do that. So today went very well, from what I understand, from our schools, in our first mask optional day, and there were some brand-new smiles that people recognized, and faces that looked familiar but not quite familiar today, as people were noticing each other without their masks. So that's a great sense of hope, isn't it, to be able to turn a corner with that, and to really look positively to being able to mitigate the remaining effects of the pandemic? A couple of notes about the mask optional policy in our schools that we're having effective now. This will apply to all of our school buildings and facilities, including the Performing Arts Center, during school and city functions. So when the Performing Arts Center is functioning as a school event or a city event, masks are also optional. There are some exceptions to the mask optional rule. When a student is returning to school following, or any person is returning to school following a positive diagnosis of COVID, after their required five days of quarantine, they must wear a mask indoors and in school vehicles from the sixth to the 10th day after their diagnosis. So masks will be required for people returning after a positive diagnosis of COVID. Also, because we're no longer requiring universal masks, people who are close contacts to people with a positive case of COVID, who are also unvaccinated and are not participating in pool testing, will have to be part of the quarantine for the five days. That was an exemption that we were able to follow because we had universal masking. We no longer have that, so that if someone is a close contact, such as in a household, they're unvaccinated and they're not part of pool testing, they will have to quarantine for the five days. And that's, again, according to the CDC's protocol. We are allowing people to wear masks for whatever reason they choose to. I think there's, in some ways, normalizing the use of masks, so we may see people wearing masks for some time, for various reasons, and that's totally fine. If we see a positive rise of cases, we may need to revisit this decision. We'll be monitoring, just as we do every day, and reporting positive cases of COVID. It's been greatly reduced over the last several weeks, which is great news. We had four cases reported today, none yesterday, six on Monday, so we're seeing much smaller numbers, which is great. But unless we are advised to do so by the DOE, or we are required to do so because of outbreak status, or we see a real sharp rise in cases, we'll maintain this protocol. We're also keeping our other protocols in place, including our daily symptoms screening, so please continue to check for COVID symptoms before coming to school every day. If you're sick, please stay home with any of the COVID symptoms. We'll be isolating and quarantining positive cases of COVID for the required five days. People can come back to school on Day 6, but again, would have to wear masks through Day 10. We'll continue to wash hands. We'll continue to practice as much social distancing as we can. We'll continue to deep-clean and sanitize our spaces. And we will continue, at least for the time being, to continue with pool testing at our K through 6, as an early identification, as a mitigation strategy. We'll continue to revisit that, too, as we move into this next phase of pandemic management. So we're very pleased that we're able to turn this corner. I'm hopeful, I'm encouraged by what we heard today. Response to that announcement last week was fairly positive. There were some concerns. If we're not having universal masks, what happens if? To which I remind folks, people can continue to wear masks, and obviously, we need to do what we can. Fortunately, we're able to have a number of choices at our own disposal, at our family's disposal, that we didn't have earlier in the pandemic. So being able to choose, as Dr. Shaw has said, being able to choose our own mitigation options seems to be appropriate at this point. So I don't know if there were questions or comments. I appreciate the support from the committee as we were making that decision last week, but if there are comments or questions about that or responses?
Thanks very much. I appreciate the clarification on all that, and hopefully, we have turned a corner.
It feels that way. Let's hope we stay around that corner. Couple of updates we'd like to give. First, I'd like to ask, through the chair, if Amanda Atkinson-Lewis could come up to the podium. Amanda is our Equity Resources Coordinator, and Amanda is going to give a quick update on some of the work that we're doing within the schools around equity. She was at the Ed Programs Committee meeting last month, that Mrs. Schultz will report on in a little bit, but if Amanda could give us some updates as to what is going on with our equity initiative in our schools.
And two things I want to do really quickly before we do that. One, I think you have a question, Dr. O'Donnell, about close contacts? Sorry, my technology is catching up to you.
I do. The question was, are the schools contact tracing again because close contacts have to quarantine?
No, the school is not conducting the contact tracing. This is if someone is a close contact, particularly in a household, that's how we would be self-reporting close contacts.
Right, and then, really quickly, before we have Amanda come up, we didn't approve the minutes from our past meeting. Sorry, I skipped over that. Our last meeting was on February 9th. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes that were presented? Okay, so we do need to approve that.
Yep. So, motion, is there a motion for that?
Andrea. So, second Andrea's motion to approve that. Jeremy?
All in favor.
Don't do roll, just raise your hand.
Just raise your hand.
Just, all those in favor, if you can just raise your hand? Okay, great. That is six in favor and one absent.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thanks for your reason in doing that, and now we'll move on to Amanda.
Hey, everyone, I'm Amanda Atkinson-Lewis. I'm the Equity Resources Coordinator for Westbrook School Department. Before I get into some of the work that we're doing, I wanted to read a snippet of a piece of the district's equity statement, and if I had more time, I'd read the whole thing. But the snippet I wanted to read was, "Schools have an obligation to stand at the center of justice. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are not partisan issues, but rather prerequisites of high-quality education for all children." And the rest of the equity statement can be found on the website, as I'm sure you all know. So first, I wanted to talk a bit about kind of the scope of the equity work that's going on in the district, kind of where it is coming from, where we are now, and where I hoped that we are headed. Thanks to the incredible work of Regina Phillips, who held the position before me. She really got the ball rolling with naming the importance that equity work happened with Westbrook Schools. She got the Equity Leadership Group going amongst a million other, getting the ball rolling for many kind of very important equity-based initiatives with Westbrook School Department. I came on the scene in August, and Regina did an amazing job, kind of bringing me up to speed, doing a million warm handoffs, and making sure I was ready to kind of hit the ground running when school started. So where we are coming from is that from, since equity has been formally named as a priority of the district, the work has centered on laying a foundation of learning and building baseline knowledge for staff that fosters an equity mindset. You kind of think of this as like Equity 101 learning. Example topics would be learning about implicit bias, or systems of socialization, understanding how past U.S. laws and policies have shaped the differences in access to opportunities and wealth that we see today, and beginning to understand our own identities and how those might influence our work in schools. So key people in the district are identified to get this first wave of Equity 101 learning, and those people were members of the Equity Leadership Group, members of the leadership team, and a few other people across the school district. Right now, we are, there's kind of like the next layer of school staff who are receiving this Equity 101 professional development, and they are people whose school leaders have identified as kind of natural leaders in the building. So those might be teachers, those might be ed techs, those might be custodians, but people who kind of organically have landed in these kind of unofficial roles of being leaders in their schools. And right now, they are in the process of an Equity 101 PD mini-series with one of our consultant groups, Creative Discourse, and it sounds like the feedback is wonderful. And so, and you all will be a part of a retreat on April 30th, where Sue and Sagacity from Creative Discourse will be providing a version of that Equity 101, a day of Equity 101 learning, for the school board and perhaps a few other members of the Westbrook community who have close relationships with the school department. Where we are headed, so we're kind of rounding a curve. We were building people's baseline knowledge to be able to approach equity work from an ethical standpoint, and we are headed towards kind of the next layer of equity work in schools, which is really focusing on raising historically marginalized people's voices to help us inform not only our own equity-based initiatives, but also other school systems and practices. Important puzzle pieces of this work include continuing the learning of our own, learning more about our own identities, learning about predictable patterns of reactions that arise when this kind of student-based raising of voices work happens in schools, and also creating comfortable spaces and strategies for raising students' and community member and family's voices. So we're kind of in this curve of heading towards really being focused on being strategic about how we can learn about students' experiences, their ideas, and then use their voices to help us inform larger system change work. Currently, I oversee the Equity Leadership Group, and the Equity Leadership Group is comprised of people from each school building, and we do have some work to do to get representation from each school department. So that is on my to-do list, to get more representation from all departments of Westbrook Schools onto the Equity Leadership Group. We have four subcommittees, and I'm just going to try to do this quickly and let you know what each subcommittee is working on, and how that kind of is landing into school, into schools. So we have a PD, a Professional Development Subcommittee, and they're currently, their goal and what they're doing, and it's awesome, is they're putting together a menu of PD, Professional Development, learning opportunities for the summer that will be available for Westbrook School staff. It's not mandatory, but, you know, they're working on putting together a lot of different options for equity, you know, DEI learning. And then also, they're thinking into the future of how they can continue to provide more learning experiences into next year and beyond. An important puzzle piece to that work is they have just put together an amazing, an Equity Professional Development Survey that's going to go out to Westbrook staff, hopefully by this Friday. And that survey is going to kind of gauge people's interest levels, and like what sort of topics they want to learn about, what do they feel comfortable talking about with their colleagues versus in the classroom, et cetera, et cetera. And then from the results of that survey, we will finalize kind of what summer professional development learning opportunities will exist. We also have a Hiring Subcommittee. This committee is working in collaboration with Jose Bo, who is a consultant from Great Schools Partnership, which is an equity consulting firm. And that group is looking at strategies that will lead to further diversifying Westbrook School Department staff. For example, they're looking at the wording of certain job postings, thinking about where positions are posted, and thinking about, for example, how are existing BIPOC staff being supported, and how can we advertise that new BIPOC staff would also be supported if they came to work at Westbrook Schools? Lots more ideas there, but I'm going to move on. The last two subcommittees are, we're working on two big projects that are going to start to, oh, they've already started to kind of influence some of the work in schools, but they're going to have the potential to influence a lot more as we continue to get them going. We have a SEL, Social Emotional Learning Subcommittee of the Equity Leadership Group, and that group is working on a district equity SEL plan, and I could talk about it forever, but what I will say about it is that it is rooted in the Five Castle Competencies, and it also borrows a lot from Learning for Justice's social justice standards. So it's kind of like a blend. The framework of this SEL plan is really primarily going to be rooted in the Five Castle Competencies, but it's also going to have, be very heavily influenced from Learning for Justice's social justice standards. This SEL plan is going to include an overall framework, which is just kind of like the philosophy of the plan and best practices. It will involve a toolkit with resources, and it will also likely have a professional development to accompany it, so that staff kind of are on-rode. And then we also have an Equity in Curriculum Group, and that group is also working on a toolkit about how to approach curriculum with an equity lens. And we are creating our own toolkit that is being influenced by two of the industry's, like best-in-the-biz industry model Equity in Curriculum toolkits that are out there, the Washington and the New York models. I feel like I've been talking for a long time, and I could say a lot more, but I think I'm going to leave it there. I will say, the plan for both of these two big projects, the SEL and the Curriculum One, they're very connected, and they have very similar emergent common themes, and so we're going to make sure when we are rolling them out, number one, we have a titrated plan for rolling these out, so we have like at least a three-year plan. It's not like we're going to drop this in Westbrook School Department's lap in the fall and say, okay, go, do it all. We have a plan to kind of introduce these tools in a way that will be doable, and we're also going to make sure to highlight all of the common themes between the two, because equity isn't just living in a corner, you know, it's everywhere. That is all.
Thank you so much. Really excited to talk about that.
If you have any questions, let me know. Email me, reach out, I'm happy to answer questions now.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Andrea?
I just wanted to take a second and appreciate the fact that you were at Saturday's community event, talking to people about One Westbrook, and really including the community in the conversation, and I thought that was lovely.
Awesome.
And Amanda has a standing agenda item at our Ed Programs meeting, a regular agenda item, so that she'll be continuously updating folks on the work of the Equity Leadership Group. I'm so proud of Amanda's work and the Equity Leaders' work, and of all of the work in the district. This is really, really important work, really hard work, and they are doing a magnificent job under Amanda's leadership. So, nice work, and thank you, Amanda.
Yeah, I get to report out on all this, but there are a lot of people who are working very, very hard behind the scenes, so just want to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. So we have another update. I've asked Dr. O'Donnell, through you, Mrs. Salisbury, to, do you have a quick update on our elementary math pilot? And I hope I'm not stealing Mrs. Schultz's thunder again with the Ed Programs Committee report, but, Dr. O'Donnell, if you could just give a quick update as to where we are with the math program pilot?
So, the math pilot process actually started pre-COVID, believe it or not, so prior to my employment here, and unfortunately, because of school being hybrid and being out of school, it got pushed off to the side. And as Dr. Lancia spoke to earlier, in Maine, overall, math scores have shown a pretty considerable decline. We have been using everyday math. The elementary schools have been stepping away from that, because they're finding that type of curriculum doesn't meet the needs of students. There's more of a cyclical piece to that, rather than a mastery piece, so it's time to kind of return to getting the basics, understanding them, and being able to apply them to future skills. So through the instructional coaches and some very dedicated teachers who chose to participate in a pilot, returning to school full-time this year, we piloted two programs. One was into math, and the other was ZERN. It's been a lengthy process. The teachers have had a lot of time to interact with one another. They got to observe each other teach the curriculums, and did a lot of work with the coaches in terms of feedback and discussion. And a recommendation was made to adopt the ZERN program, which we felt met the needs of our learners, on both ends of the spectrum, students who need remediation, but also students who would benefit from acceleration. It's a very accessible program, it's very representative of our community, and we're looking forward to moving ahead with an implementation plan after the budget process.
Great, thank you, Kim. And one last thing I forgot to mention, based on the communications you received tonight. We have two of our longtime Westbrook teachers retiring this year. Phil Rich, who's been teaching music, beginning music, beginning band to our students for generations, is retiring this year after many, many, many years, more than 40 years in education, the majority of those here in the Westbrook schools. Phil is one of the hearts of the Westbrook Music Department, always has been, and he continues to be. So his shoes will be hard to fill, but we will certainly miss you, Phil, and we congratulate you, and thank you, again, for the literally thousands and thousands of children that he's taught how to play instruments, always with the beginners, and always still loving the beginners. So thank you, Phil, for your service over these years. And also, Charles LaMojo, who's our chef, our culinary arts teacher at WRVC, is retiring at the end of this year. Charlie has been with us for a number of years at WRVC and has built a really magnificent program, teaching students about the art of cuisine, as well as what it's like to work in a commercial kitchen, really supporting students in the program, supporting students who are moving on to culinary institutes and in other careers in the culinary fields. And chef shares his recipes, which is really amazing, and he's very generous with what he and his students produce every single day. So congratulations to Charlie and to Phil as well. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, great. Now on to Chair and Committee reports. Just a quick report for me. I think we'll talk a little bit more about the budget in a few minutes, but I, and again, with the masks, I just want to thank everybody for everything that's, over the last few years, you know, they, how everybody's handled the different rules and their policies and keep trying to keep COVID at bay, so I appreciate that, and looking forward to getting this budget work underway. And looking forward to getting this budget work underway. Always a fun time, and look forward to that discussion. The Finance Report, really, we had a meeting before this where we just dove into the budget, what that's going to look like, what the proposal is currently from administration, and what we can expect. Some of the themes throughout the budget that we'll learn more about, where we stand as a budget, excuse me, as a district financially. You know, we're in really good shape and under the leadership of Dr. Lancia and Dr. Majanis, Dr. O'Donnell, and I appreciate that. So more to come, lots more finance stuff happening over the next few months. And look forward to everybody's input and thankful for the comments that we're getting, you know, from the community, which is really helpful. The Policy Report?
Sure, the Policy Committee met on February 28th at Central Office and discussed and reviewed and decided to recommend three of the policies that are on the agenda for New Business Tonight. Two, all of the policies that we're going to talk about tonight are, haven't been reviewed in over a decade. So they needed some major updating. The first is the Student Assessment Policy. And the current policy that we have is very outdated. The newest policy reflects the fact that we use multiple measures of assessment to measure student achievement and is in line with what the statewide recommended policy is. The next two involve review and reconsideration of instructional and library materials. We had a great presentation from a couple of our librarians who talked to us about some of the ALA best practices and how those have evolved over the years. So the policy that you'll see in your packets tonight reflects some of the ALA best practices. They're recommended by our librarian.